Good evening. I'd like to call the session this Public Work Action Meeting of the Mawa Board of Education for August 5th, 2020. Please note, due to the COVID-19 health crisis, this meeting of the Mawa Board of Education will not be physically open to the public. This is to ensure we follow best practices for social distancing. The board meeting will be livestreamed to the public via Zoom. The meeting ID for this meeting is 93087738163, and the required password is 550677. During the public portion of this meeting, members of the public can participate through the Q&amp;A feature of Zoom. All participants must provide their name and address, and your comment and/or question will be read and included in the board's public record of the meeting, just as it would for a standard board meeting. Tonight's agenda includes a detailed presentation to the Board of Education and the public regarding the district's reopening plan for September 2020. This plan includes much of the information shared with our community by email on July 24th, 2020. The plan developed over the last six weeks is the result of recommendations from our 40-person task force, comprised of teachers, parents, community members, medical experts, Board of Education members, and administrators. We also reached out to surrounding districts and relied on guidelines from the CDC and NJDOA. Finally, it addresses many of the questions submitted by members of the public to the Mawa Reentry@MawaK12NJ.us. The district continues our commitment to answer all questions regarding the reopening plan. We value your participation, contributions, and questions, and believe that many of your questions will be addressed during our presentation. Questions submitted through Zoom will be recorded and responded to no later than August 14th, 2020. For questions that remain unanswered, there are a variety of means available to you to submit your questions or obtain additional information so your issue can be addressed. Beginning this week, building principals will be holding virtual office hours, and FAQ will be posted on the district website starting 8/4/2020. We will continue to gather questions through the Mawa Reentry@MawaK12NJ.us, and our goal is to have all unanswered questions from tonight's presentation answered no later than August 14th, 2020. Could you please take roll calls?
Mr. Denise?
Here.
Mr. Gallo?
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Here.
Ms. Conoco?
Here.
Dr. Morthe?
Here.
Ms. Sacco?
Here.
Mr. Coughlin?
Here.
Mr. DeSilva? And Ms. Baron?
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda. This meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News on the record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on August 5th, 2020 in the administrative offices at New Jersey Department of Public Safety. Could everyone please rise personally to the class, which is behind everyone? And Mr. Coughlin, would you like to lead us in this room?
I would like to lead this to defy that the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, the director of session this evening. May I have a motion to open to the public agenda? Public any questions? Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions related to business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. May I have a motion to open to the public, Ms. Conoco, second by Mr. Kizmarsky? May I have a motion to close the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Sacco. Thank you very much. Dr. Fitz, first I would like to introduce our new interim superintendent, Dr. Fitz, to everyone. You had some time to read about the gentleman sitting to my right. We are very happy to have him in the district and to work with him this next year. Do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I have a report for you to say.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, all. To members of Board of Education, ladies and gentlemen, I appear before you with thankfulness and appreciation for the confidence that you have vested in me to serve as your interim superintendent for the school year. I'd like to express my thanks to my wife, Cheryl, for loaning me out to the district. I've been on loan to districts for a large portion of my life, about five decades. No district is the same, large, small, rural, urban. Each district was enjoyable for me. I learned a lot. I have already started to enjoy my work with the district. It's a very warm place. I'm receiving that warmth from the staff, and its purpose totally driven to achieve. The current health crisis that we're involved in is nothing that I've ever experienced in all my years of experience. I'm looking forward to working with staff, working with families, working for everyone to continue to provide high-quality educational experiences for you.
Thank you very much. Kyle, do you have an interest to report for us this evening?
No, no report this evening.
Mr. Fair, do you want to report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. On the agenda this evening are a number of leave replacement teachers. So we are fully staffed for the 2020 school year, and we are happy to have these teachers join our team. Also, we have new hire orientation scheduled for this upcoming Monday. So we felt it was really important to have our new hires in person here in district. They're excited, we're excited, and we look forward to meeting everyone in person, especially since those new staff members were hired through a virtual process. So it'll be nice to get some face time with them. And also, we want to welcome Dr. Fitz. He's been here for three days, and I have to say, over the course of the three days, it has been a pleasure for all of Central Office to work alongside him. So we're happy he's here. That's my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fair.
Thank you.
I have no report for this evening. I know that we have our reopening plan that's going to be presented, and I have no report this evening. Do I have any board committee reports for this evening?
Policy.
Policy, yes. Mr. Denise?
We have the policy and regulations on tonight's agenda. First one is policy and regulation 1381, domestic violence. This policy was revised in response to the recently enacted and reform domestic violence policy, which encourages public employees who are victims of domestic violence to seek assistance from their community resources officers. The regulation is new and is based on the statutory requirement for a district to adopt a domestic violence policy. The next one we have on the agenda is policy 1649. It's the Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act. This is a new policy. It permits a school employee to use federal medical for a family leave if the employee is unable to work in order to care for a child. If the child's school has been closed due to the COVID-19 public health emergency, it requires this school district to provide paid sick time if an employee is unable to work or telework due to the employee being subject to a government order quarantine or is caring for an individual who is being ordered to quarantine. The third policy is student assessment. This policy has been revised to require statewide assessment for science through the grade five, and previously it was only required through grade four. After that is the policy and regulation 5111, eligibility of resident slash non-resident students. This policy and regulation has been revised to now indicate that a school district may not condition student enrollment on the fact that the New Jersey One-to-Be-Able Commission does not have the name or address of the parent on file. The next one up is policy and regulation 5200, attendance. This has been revised to provide more detailed explanation of this distinction between attendance recording in the school register and attendance recording required by state law. Next one up is policy 5620, expulsion. 5620, expulsion. This policy has been revised to require the principal to convene a meeting between a student and appropriate school personnel after a student has experienced multiple suspensions or may be subject to a proposed expulsion from public school to identify any of the student's behavior or health difficulties as soon as practical. The purpose of the meeting is to ascertain whether a student needs supportive interventions or referrals utilizing school or community resources to address identified behaviors or health difficulties. The next one up is policy and regulation 8320, personal records. This has been revised to provide additional guidance regarding public access to personal file information. Lastly is policy 8462, reporting potentially missing or abused children. This policy has been revised to require the Board of Education to supply specific information in each school building about reporting child abuse, including a toll-free hotline for reporting child abuse. The information shall be on a poster and displayed at each school in at least one high-traffic public area that is widely used by students.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denise. Anyone else? Okay. Do we have any board member remarks or additional comments, reports, or other non-agenda items?
Yes, Dr. Morthe. I'd just first like to personally also welcome Dr. Fitz to our district, and I think that we're going to learn a lot from your life experience as well as your experience in education. So, welcome to the Thunderbird family. I also wanted to, in light of the reopening plan, I wanted to thank everybody who participated with the task force. There were staff, there were board members, there were administrators, there were principals, but there was also community members, and I think the collaborative effort was fantastic. Thanks to the chair people who really led the effort very well. It was very organized, well-structured, and I was fortunate enough to participate with it, so I know that personally. But again, thanks to everyone, and good luck on the presentation today. The other thing I'd like to really say is to parents out there. I know there's some people tonight without power, may not have Wi-Fi, but if you're watching, if you're watching us, then please pass on to your neighbors. Make sure people take a look. People put a lot of effort into preparing all of this information. So please look at the videos, read the documents, and, you know, I think as a family here in Mawa, we'll make sure our kids get back to school safely and serve them well with their best education. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just, we have Ruth Davis here today, and we have mentioned Ruth at many board meetings prior to this. Ruth has been one of the behind-the-scenes worker bees and coordinators for all our technology efforts to make the remote learning program successful. I really appreciated the website that she created with the head of all the resources on how to use a computer. I'm learning. But Ruth, thank God, is here tonight, and she's helping broadcast this to the community tonight. But she's somebody that we've mentioned many, many times, and we just want to publicly acknowledge her for her support of the district. Thank you, Ruth.
And I'm waiting for my tutorial on Google Podcasts. So once we're ready to meet in person, I'd like that to be...
There's actually a video on her website.
Oh, that I should go watch. Okay, I'll do that right after tonight.
I'll send you the link.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to take 16A, Old Business. May I have a motion to proceed, Ms. Conoco, second by Mr. Kizmarsky?
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes, for the minutes of July 10th and abstain for the minutes of July 27th.
Thank you. Mr. Coughlin?
Yes.
And Ms. Baron?
Yes.
And now I'd like a motion to proceed on 17A through W. Ms. Conoco, second by Ms. Kizmarsky. Do you have any comments or questions on any of these items, any board members? Okay, could you please proceed with the roll call?
Yes. Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin?
Yes.
And Ms. Baron?
Yes.
Now, I'd like a motion to proceed on New Business Personnel A through M. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Coughlin. Do we have any comments on any of these items?
I have just a quick question on 18J, which is the principal evaluation tool. So last month, I believe we voted on... Is this any change from what we voted on last month?
The adjustment is the title. The adjustment is the title of the instrument.
Okay.
But the mechanism is the same.
Okay. Looking forward to that.
Those are all our new hires. Best of luck, and thank you. Welcome to the district. Is that it? Okay, could you please take roll calls?
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin?
Yes.
And Ms. Baron?
Yes.
Any public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. May I have a motion to open to the public? Mr. Coughlin, second by Mr. Denise. Any questions or comments from the public? Thank you. May I have a motion to close the...
Nothing on the website. Here.
Okay, I have a motion to close, Ms. Conoco, second by Ms. Sacco. At this time, we are going to switch places with our administrators, who will be presenting the reopening plan, and we're going to stay in this room.
Okay, so I think it's important for us to know publicly that as per CDC guidelines, all panelists have sanitized our seating spaces. Everyone is facing in the same direction, and all panelists are wearing face coverings when not speaking. So I'm going to introduce our presenters. Our first presenter is Mr. Cobb Leaker, our business administrator. He also serves as our co-chair of our Facilities Task Force Committee. Hello, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for participating either through the Zoom functions this evening. We look forward to presenting to you and answering any questions that you may have. Most will be answered during our presentation. We also have our Q&amp;A open as well, to take questions that way. Thank you. With Mr. Greg Romero, who supervises our buildings and grounds, he also co-chaired our Facilities Task Force.
Nice to see everybody. I'm going to be sharing a few of our cleaning protocols later this evening.
Dr. Linda Movino, our principal of Betsy Ross School, served as a co-chair for our Instruction Task Force.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. This is a hard time for everybody, and we know that. And we really appreciate all the feedback that you've given and the support that you've shown us, and we hope to continue that partnership as we move into September.
Dr. Michael Tutturo, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
I just want to thank everybody for joining us to piggyback off of what Dr. Movino said. This product that we're going to present to you is really a result of so many people that were shared earlier, that that's a point of pride for us to know that so many voices were involved, so much feedback was involved, to make really thoughtful decisions for our kids and for our staff to make sure that everyone comes in in a safe fashion.
Ms. Lisa Rizno, Director of Special Services.
Good evening. It's a pleasure and an honor to be able to serve the families of our most neediest students here in the district, and I am grateful for the opportunity to help plan for a safe return.
Mr. Dominic Liata, Director of Guidance and one of our co-chairs of our Social Emotional Learning Task Force.
Good evening. We know the route we're about to take is not going to be ideal. Hybrid learning is not where we want to be, but we understand that the plans we put in place and the hard work and effort that our community's put into all the effort and commitment they put into place will make our situation very wonderful.
Thank you. And Dr. Fitz, our interim superintendent, he's just going to get us started.
Thank you very much. During the past seventy-two hours, I have been in close working relationship with Dennis, Michael, Kyle, Lisa, and others. What have been my observations? The work that they are doing is intense, it's thoughtful, it's inclusive, it's strategic, it's persuasive. As stated by Lisa in one of the meetings, she said, "It's all-consuming." This is a time that we really hold life in our hands for children and for staff, and we must devote all our energy for the safety of the student population and our staff population. The work that they have done is elegant, it's innovative, and it is robust. So it is satisfied the requirements that I have for this kind of work. It appears that this work has been accomplished through a great model, a very strong, driven collaborative model, that they talk to people, they hear from people. I have reviewed the model, I reviewed their work, I reviewed the documents. I offer my unconditional support to the rollout and acknowledge that we can fully open in a way that they suggested, but we will await feedback so that we can make corrections and make adjustments and continue to find opportunity. So it's work in progress. I want to thank all of those who are nameless, who have offered and made a contribution to this endeavor. My deepest appreciation to each and everyone, and I ask that you continue to support us in this endeavor. Remember, we all get it together.
Well said. Thank you. I also wanted, in reflecting on all of the work over the course of the last several months, I wanted to, I put something together because I felt like this is important enough. So first, I also want to thank everyone who has been a part of this reopening planning process, inclusive of everyone involved in our task force work, which will be presented this evening. Additionally, we have engaged medical experts and our school nurses, and have had really authentic dialogue with the MEA leadership throughout the summer as we work through all reopening efforts. Although tonight's presentation has been informed by questions submitted through our Reentry email address, what is so hard for me and for us this evening is the recognition that we do not have all of the answers, and our answers will not satisfy everyone. While this presentation will answer many of your questions, in no way is this a cure-all, and that is the most difficult part about all of this for everyone sitting up here. Know that every single one of our conversations and every part of our reopening plan follows the philosophy we always have followed. We do right by and do our best for our kids no matter what. This evening's presentation to the Board of Ed will allow for our community to submit questions into record through this webinar's Q&amp;A feature. For those questions, we are not able to answer this evening. We will be able to answer those questions in a timely manner at some point after our board presentation. This presentation will also be made available on our website for our community. I do want to thank all members of our school community who are currently tuning in. I want to thank our board for their continued support. I want to thank our administrative team, many who are here in our audience, and for those who are not able to, this presentation will be recorded and posted on our website. So with that, we'll get started with our presentation. Right here, up to now, is really our timeline for preparation. As everyone knows, March 13th is when schools, our closings were mandated. And ever since then, there's been a simultaneous closing while also planning for our reentry for the fall. So you'll see here, many of the items on this list are, you know, items we've communicated to our community via email. Many you've heard in Governor Murphy's daily briefings or on the news. And the most recent is our All Virtual Option, which is available to our students for 100% virtual, which Dr. Tutturo will speak to later this evening. So as you can see, with ongoing guidance, as Dr. Fitz has shared, there is going to be ongoing updates to our reopening plan along the way. Here, we want everyone to be aware of the timeline. So the reopening plan was originally due to the NJDOA by July 20th, and due to all of the changes related to what is going on, that date has been moved to July 27th, July 31st, and just recently, it's been moved to tomorrow. So the reopening plan that we are presenting to you and we're submitting to the Board of Education for approval, once approved, we will send that to the NJDOA this evening. One thing I've learned through just casual dialogue with parents in the community is something that I feel needs to be noted, that based on the guidance from Governor Murphy, the state, we are required to be open. We need to have some sort of in-person instruction occurring. So that is a mandate, and we've listed the language on this slide. School buildings will open in some capacity for in-person instruction and operations in the fall. So simultaneously, we are required to communicate our specific instructional schedules four weeks ahead of our opening of our school, and this presentation satisfies that mandate.
Ultimately, the guidance for our decision-making was led by the Road Back, which was presented to us by the New Jersey Department of Ed. It was defined as flexible guidance, the baseline of standards, a comprehensive handbook, and a toolkit for our reopening. It compelled us to create the plan for in-person learning. It was created by the New Jersey Department of Ed, similar in the model in which we used to create our plan. The New Jersey Department of Ed used educators, community members, parents to formulate... The New Jersey Department of Ed used educators, community members, parents to formulate their stakeholders group. This led the New Jersey Department of Ed to develop a plan that requires us to emphasize education and socialization while addressing conditions for learning, leadership, policy and funding, and continuity of learning. The DOE guidance required that we also adhere to the CDC reopening suggestions, that we adhere to the CDC mitigation strategies. Mitigation strategies are designed to prevent the transmission of this virus. Social distancing needed to be maintained in and out of the classroom. Daily sanitation and disinfecting must take place. Handwashing and sanitizing needed to be consistently available, and that which is now mandated by our governor, the use of face coverings.
Our core actions for prevention: hand washing, the hand sanitizers mentioned frequently throughout the day, signage and floor markings to encourage distancing, cleaning and disinfecting high-touch areas, working with our custodial staff, physical distancing in the classroom, and face coverings for staff, students, and any visitors to our schools.
As was detailed throughout the beginning of the conversation or presentation, this is a monumental task, and in order for us to do this intelligently and effectively, we really needed to break it down into three specific categories. The three categories are instruction, social emotional learning, and facilities. So those were really the tenants of our task force. Each of our subcommittees were able to tackle those specific strands, and we felt as though they were very comprehensive and robust, and in order for us to do it effectively, we needed to separate them out. We can't just purely look at instruction during this time. It's really important for us to solidify the space, make sure that it's safe for everyone to come back, and in time, that instruction will be able to be up and running. But before that takes place, our space needs to be safe, and our students and staff need to be made whole. A lot of things have happened over the past couple of months that impact all of our students and our staff in different ways, and we need to account for that, so we were very happy that we had a subcommittee specific to that population and supports and recommendations are going to be made for them. We'll talk about instruction as the presentation goes on along the lines of classroom setup, instructional strategies, and different ways that we're going to be able to acquire how our students are learning, where they are, and how our plans are going to meet their needs. Along the lines of the facilities, I'm very happy to report that the information that you're going to hear tonight was done in a very thoughtful and thorough fashion, talking specifically to transportation, also looking at our brick and mortar experience of how we're going to situate our space to make sure that it's going to be a safe and healthy environment to the best of our ability for our staff and students. As we said, this is a monumental task, and there's a lot of questions. So we have been committed to sharing information as best as possible on an ongoing basis. That information, we know, needs to be done in a lot of different ways. The last thing we want to do is really bombard everybody with emails, because after a while, those emails aren't read. And to be quite honest, there's no real personal connection in those emails, and now more than ever, we need to have a connection with our community. So we know that we've made an effort to create videos to create that personal touch. Those videos have been broken out into different pieces. One was introducing the task force and the work that's being done. We felt that that was important for our community before we got started. The next one was to introduce the schedules. We knew that that was a complex conversation, and doing it through an email wouldn't be sufficient. And most recently, the last two was Behind the Mask, going back to the social emotional piece. We know that wearing a mask is going to be a challenge for all of us. So part of our process is educate our students on how to wear our mask, sustaining that, wearing the mask over time, and all the things in between. So we tried to lighten up the serious situation and make our students more comfortable with this experience by the Behind the Mask video, and that was an offshoot of our SEL Task Force. Last but definitely not least, was the introduction to our community about virtual office hours. We felt it is extremely important that our community is able to have an opportunity to talk and get answers specific to their questions. Some of the questions are at the district level, and it's our hope that we're able to answer all of them throughout our presentation today, but other questions are very much specific to a specific grade level or specific student, and that personal connection can be done through interacting with our principals. So we felt like it was most important to have our principals reach out to their school community and set up times for that to happen. I'm very happy to report that we created this Mawa reentry at mawa.khlmj.us email address. It has been used, and we are happy about that. We had over 95 emails come in so far. Within those emails, there have been a number of questions embedded, and I'm very great, we are very grateful for that. Those emails were answered. All the emails have been answered by this meeting today, and a lot of that information allowed us to generate the themes that are covered in this presentation, as well as the FAQ that was distributed yesterday. A lot of those questions were similar. There were some specific to a school, and we directed them to the administrators to get that support. But I have to say, the common themes there, you'll see in our presentation, they talk about daycare, before and after care. They talked about questions about the AM and PM schedule and how they are coordinated. They talked about the class sizes, some schedule specificity. There had been a number about virtual instruction, which I'll talk about very soon, and a number of things in between. A lot of them talked about our facilities, and we know that that's important for all of us. We were able to talk to the MEA a couple of weeks ago, and then we were also able to talk to the MEA leadership today, the building-based leadership today, and we had a great conversation, so we were able to share the specifics about our facilities. But this is, all these are all things that we know the community wants to know, and we're really committed to give you as much information as possible to educate you on the protocols that we are putting in place and for you to feel more comfortable and confident about reentering. So if you haven't done so, if you have email questions following this meeting, this will continue to stay up. We will continue to answer those questions, but I just wanted to thank the people, the 95 people who emailed us so far, and I'm glad that we had an opportunity to connect with them before today.
I did just add to the communication piece. The bulk of our video communication to our community has been designed mostly for our parents, that for the latter half of August, we're going to be focusing our video messages to our students to speak to what Ms. Rizzo shared regarding how to wear a mask, what does that look like. So that's going to be a shift in our communication in the coming weeks.
Some important notes on face coverings and masks. Masks will be required for both staff and students. The district will provide masks for anybody in need. And face shields will be provided to teachers for certain activities like speech, where expressions, facial expressions need to be seen.
I'd like to thank the 51 administrators, board members, principals, supervisors, teachers, our professionals, counselors, child study members, nurses, members of the Department of Health, members of the Transportation and Maintenance Staff, and parents who made up our three task force committees. Our first meetings were held right after the Fourth of July, and we continue to meet two or three times per week to fund the best resources for the students, families, and staff and community of Mawa. The committee's dedication, sacrifice, and passion, and looking every angle and leaving no stone unturned, was amazing to see. This group came together for the one common goal, and we did some incredible work. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Ravino, who discussed the first committee. You start with me.
Okay, so the plan for this evening, we will be going through all three committees. So you have up there is facilities, food service, and transportation. You have our SEL committee, which my colleagues have talked about previously, and instruction. Moving into instruction, we're going to cover a few things. The instructional schedule, what that looks like at the lower level and what that looks like at the upper levels. Our special education and related services, our classroom setup, assessments and screenings for children, and professional development needs for our teachers. Dr. Tutturo is going to take you through a lot of the survey information, which is the base for all of our planning.
So as we said, the pride that we have and the confidence that we have in this presentation is really all the different players or members of the community that have been involved in this process, whether it's sitting at the table, at the task, doing the task force work, or participating in the survey. I have to say, sending out a survey, you're always wondering, are people going to respond? We have a little bit over 2,000 students in our school, and to have 2,729 responses, it gives us a sense of confidence that the information that we have here is something that really encapsulates our community's perspective. So when we look at some of the data, so we were able to pick some of the data that works for our presentation and the plan. Something that's extremely important to us is the schedule. The schedule, there's a couple components that go into deciding what the schedule should be. Obviously, first and foremost, what's the instructional value of that schedule? Dr. Ravino will talk about that. Also, how is this schedule going to ensure safety for the people who are involved? And last but not least, how will this schedule impact our community? So when you look at the results from our survey, looking at the first portion of the graph, it's the shortened day. That's the elementary schedule, the AM/PM split. Of the 2,700 responses, we had over 2,000 responses either supporting or somewhat supporting that model. The next, the in-between, the graph in-between talks about our secondary model. That is our A-Day, A-Day/B-Day, we're alternating schedule split. So that's something that we wanted to present to people to answer. This is why we're doing what we're doing. Another piece, which was obviously is something that people struggle with, and we understand it's new, so it brings a sense of concern, is masks, and how are we going to be able to sustain wearing this mask? This was done prior to the mandate, but obviously, the mandate reinforces our decision. This is something that we are aware of, and like I said before, the SEL committee has talked about trying to really demystify that mask, create a sense of comfort, and increase stamina while wearing the mask. This is something that, as Mr. Romero talked about, all students and staff who are coming into our building, they are going to be required to wear masks. This is going to be another layer of protection for all of us. So it would be the distance that's going to be maintained in the classroom, the masks, and obviously, the hygiene and sanitation of the different spaces. We know that there are different models out there for different districts. There are some districts who are coming in completely and just relying on the masks. We felt as though we're not in that place right now. We, you know, the state has provided us guidance and recommended that we incrementally come back and layer in those different additions as the data informs us. At this time, we feel comfortable and confident that a reduced class size is the logical and responsible first step for our community and for our students and staff. Reducing that class size allows for us to create that distance and not having people on top of each other. And again, the data from our community reinforces our decision. As you can see, there was an overwhelming amount of our community who did agree that reducing our class size is either very important or somewhat important.
Okay, so we're going to take you through what the schedules look like for the preschool and for the K-5 first, and then we'll go over why those models were chosen. So the preschool schedule looks very similar to what it always does, right? Our preschoolers come in in the AM or the PM, they're there for a shortened day, and then they go home. The same model is being used for them, but we're adding in, obviously, the less amount of students per section, and then obviously, we're going to talk about too, what the classroom might look like, okay? So preschool stays typically the same. If you look at the elementary schedule, we have an AM session and a PM session. And what, and the reason why we really looked at this, there's a couple reasons. Number one, health and safety throughout all of our grades. We want to lessen the amount of students that are in the classroom. So in order to do this at the elementary level, if we split the population in half and have half of them coming in the morning and half of them coming in the afternoon, then we're able to lessen the amount of students in the classroom at one time, and also lessen the student-to-teacher ratio, providing more instructional connection with that teacher. There's a couple things that are the same with our 6-12 model, which we'll get into. That is one of them, right? We wanted to reduce the student-to-teacher ratio. We wanted to reduce the amount of students in the classroom for safety at both levels. When you're looking at the elementary schedule, we also wanted to understand what is the best way we can have all of our students have core and have specials, but have what's meaningful for them. And a lot of the feedback we received from our younger-level families was that it was harder for their children to sustain for long periods of time on a computer. And we know that, right? It wasn't ideal. So we really looked at our day and say, okay, we really need them in person. We need to have them with us every single day. How do we do that? And that's where the A/B schedule came from, because our core can be taught in person every day, providing routine and structure for our little ones, but then also giving them the time, amount of time where they could, meaning to unmask, right? And also then be able to go home and take that mask off. So we looked at the level of the child in terms of their age and what they can sustain. On the flip side, when they're home, so if they come in in the morning and then they're in the afternoon, they're home, we lessen the amount of time that they'd have to be online, right? So since they're not home all day, they don't have to be online all day. So it's a shortened period of time for our little ones to be online for social studies, science extensions, and then all of our specials, so PE, music, things like that. If you move to the upper-level schedule, we have A/B days. Again, the base of this is for safety of student. We want to lower the capacity, the student-to-teacher ratio in the classrooms. But upper levels are a little bit different and challenged, right? Every class, we want our students to be exposed to equally. So the A/B day gives our students exposure to all classes every other day in person. So equal amount of time is given to all classes in person, and equal amount of time is given to the virtual component for all students. So doing that, it gives you the student-to-teacher ratio lower, it gives you that space for distancing, and it also allows for the continuation of curriculum to happen, because even when you're virtual, or even if you're in person, the continuation of curriculum is happening. It's not that day one and day two are the same. Day one is lesson one, if you think about it like that, and day two is lesson two. Regardless of whether you're home or in school, you have access to a continuation of curriculum. And so that's where we came up with our schedules, and those are the reasons why we really felt they were important, and they were different because of the level of child, right? The age of the child. At the upper level, they can sustain longer virtually, and they can sustain longer with a mask on.
One of the questions, a number of questions revolved around siblings. So I just want to make note along the lines of accommodations of siblings. At the K-5 level, pre-K, well, K-5 levels, since they're running the same schedule, that AM/PM schedule, whether you're Betsy and JK, or Lenape and JK, or GW, if you have siblings across the K-3, 4, 5 split, the administrators are making sure that they are going to be on the same schedule. At the secondary level, because they're running on the A-Day/B-Day split, Mr. Pascal and Mr. Corey are working with the administrative team to make sure that siblings at the 6-12 level will be on the same A-Day or B-Day. So that was, there were some of the questions that were coming from our email. I just wanted to make sure that we clarified it, and there might have been some confusion with the FAQ, so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. We can't accommodate across, because there are different schedules, but we can accommodate within each elementary and secondary.
I think a good thing to point out too, I'm sorry to jump back in, there have been a lot of emails to administrators and also to our Mawa email address asking for specific sections, specific days, either AM or PM or A/B days. How is that to be done? Our A-B days at the upper level were done by alphabetical order, right? So they took that and split it in half, so it was equally divided. At the lower level, we took our bus routes, because we provide busing to all, all children, and we wanted to continue to do that for families. In order to do that, we took our routes and took two routes in the morning and two routes, or three routes in the afternoon, five in the morning, five in the afternoon. We split the routes in half, and that equally divided our class populations in half as well. So if there are concerns about that, the public can reach out to any of the administrators, but initially, your child's placement is based off a bus route.
Thank you. Also, the schedule models that have been posted, released, and shared with our community, the times right now are approximate. That's because we are confirming with transportation what the exact times are going to be. So they're pretty close, but they're not exact. When they are exact, we will communicate that to you. On, on the next slide are the important things related to scheduling. As you should be aware already, the next two days, we have available to you, August 6th and August 7th, virtual office hours with your building principals. We felt as if this was really important, especially because we know that a lot of our parents have questions of specificity related to their program, their child. So we're offering an opportunity to connect with their principal in the next two days. The AM PM, the scheduling of A and B, those are coming in, in the next few weeks. We'll talk about a proposed calendar change, and we'll discuss the rationale for that calendar change, with September 8 being the new first day for, for our students. And also, a really important piece is understanding that there is going to be a review of the schedule, because we're going to be looking for more and more opportunities based on health data, what more in-person instruction could potentially look like dependent on what is going on in the world. November 1st, we felt was a really logical opportunity for reentry of 100% remote students to go back into the school buildings if our, our parents opted for that. And we wanted to wait those two months because it would promote consistency for students and staff as well as school operations. So again, you'll see in the reopening plan that is posted on our website, we're going to be looking at our school schedules in three phases. So phase one, we'll be looking at an ongoing review of the first two months of school. Our goal is to live through this, see what the strengths are, see what our areas for growth are, and move from there. Phase two, our goal is to reassess the schedule, do an analysis of health and wellness data, engage with our Department of Health locally, and look at the schedule then. And then phase three, we're looking at December to January, where we would be doing an ongoing review to see how we can make more opportunities for in-person instruction for our kids.
We learned a lot since distance learning started on March 13. So with, so with the new plan moving forward, every other Wednesday starting September 16, all staff members report to the school building, and this will provide additional opportunities for thorough cleaning in addition to regularly daily cleaning, and there'll be more synchronous and asynchronous learning, and for students to connect with teachers. When we went to distance learning in March, it was originally supposed to be two weeks. Two weeks turned into three weeks, and three weeks turned into three months. It's like running a 5K, when you get to finish line, you say, we're just kidding, it'll be America. So with that in mind, and moving forward to September, the big thing to understand is that September distance learning is going to be completely different than March distance learning. So the ideas of what students thought it was going to be, or what their expectations are for September are going to be a little bit different, be a lot different. We have teachers who are experts at their craft, and given the time to prepare and adjust, we'll be able to do a really, really great job. And that's what we're trying to do with this Wednesday setup, where students, parents, and teachers can take a step back, take a deep breath, and we can address and adjust, and then move on to the next step.
For virtual learning, there's been a lot of questions out there because this is something that's completely new. On July 24th, the governor put out the, the new expectations and mandates to provide this option to all students or families who would like to take part in it. Within this guidance for the Restart Recovery Plan for Education, it speaks to the opportunity for students to learn at home and have access to the curriculum that's being provided in the school. There are options and opportunities for us to do that, and in our school, in our district, we've worked through the plan with the instructional committee, the Instructional Task Force, and we continue to work through what this is going to look like. At this point, where we're at with this plan, at both the elementary and secondary level, the students who are full remote will have access to come to watching what is happening in the classroom. They'll be able to view the content and hear the teacher. At that time, they'll be able to take part in that mini lesson experience to learn what content is being delivered at that time. And then when the teacher breaks out of that whole class instruction and works with small groups, the students who are at home will be given activities to continue that learning independently. There will be opportunities for those students at home to connect with teachers throughout the week. So those, those specifics are being worked through, and that's going to be really contingent on the number of students who we have and the number of teachers that, that need that accommodation. So we are gathering that information, we're going to be sending a survey out to our students and staff tomorrow. We already had a component of our initial survey asking our community if they were, if they were either going to send their student back or not. So we take that as more of soft data, and we've talked to the board and a number of other administrators. There was a lot of, there's a lot of new information since that time, and we feel it'd be more responsible for us to send out a survey asking that question of, will you be coming in, or will you be electing to go fully remote? And then the next question that we are going to be asking our students is, are you going to be taking advantage of the bus? So those are more student-specific questions. I know Mr. Farr and his office are going to be sending information out to the staff, specific to them, but please know that that information will be coming with either today, I mean, either Thursday or Friday at the latest. And we ask families to please get that information in by the 11th of August, so we can plan accordingly. A lot of things are coming at a fast pace, and we are responsible and required to, to create a plan for our students, and we want to do that in a thoughtful fashion. So the quicker we get that information, the better suited we are to put this plan in place and make sure that it's effective.
We're going to focus a little bit more now on students who are actually onsite and in the district, either appreciating the A-B schedule half-day or the full-day A-B schedules. Part of our obligation to the CDC mitigation strategies is to engage in what is called attestation. An attestation for our student and faculty population is going to be that each, either parents or faculty members are required to complete a daily attestation form and report on their own individual health and wellness. Staff temperatures will also be taken daily. I can't emphasize enough how important and essential it is that we monitor ourselves and our children and not attend school when unwell or demonstrating any COVID-related symptoms. We will be sharing with the community our attestation form prior to, and the means in which that daily reporting will take place. And there will be a process in place in which a student or a staff member who fails to complete the form will also take part in random temperature checks. This is an area that we're working closely with our school nurses on, and we'll continue to seek advisement from the local Board of Health as well as the district physician.
Classroom and office setup. Obviously, there are going to be changes to how the classroom looks like when students and teachers come back in September. All classrooms will be decluttered by the start of the school year. Removal classroom carpets or area rugs are going to be removed and stored. Furniture, desks, chairs will be adjusted and reconfigured within the classrooms. Plexiglass will be installed where needed for secretary and support staff desks. Also, flex class dividers in any seating areas where students sit at a table as opposed to a desk. Dividers also for any small group instruction classroom areas.
So I think it's always important to have a visual. I don't know if that's the elementary in me or just the visual learner in me.
That's all of us.
Right? So as Mr. Bleeker talked about, this is what, we're going to go through, actually, for every single school, you'll see a picture of a classroom and what it might look like. This is Betsy Ross. If you look, you'll see the desks are not desks, they're tables, right? So that kind of added another layer of what do we do here? But we solved it. So everybody has their own space. There will be only two children or one person at a table at a time. And if you look at the right, there's a plexiglass divider between where the two seats are. So that will be affixed to every table, so they are not movable when the children are there, so we don't have to worry about them falling off or hurting somebody. But it will provide that safety barrier between the students as they're working. If you look around too, on the back computers in the back, every other computer is covered, so that if a child were working there, another child could go to work at the second station, but they can't work completely next to each other, there's that barrier in between. The rug is there, but the rug will be removed, okay, if you see that? And then also too, if you look at the windows, all, all schools have, hopefully, all of our rooms have windows, they do. We will open windows to get ventilation in. We will have all of our air conditions on with proper ventilation there, proper filter, filter systems in place as well. If we go to the next one, this is Lenape Meadows. Again, if you look at the tables, they are tables, not desks, same thing here. You'll have plexiglass dividers between the children. All tables are spread out using the space in the classroom. Usually, it's taken up by rugs and, and different work areas, small group work areas. Those have been removed, so that it's just student stations, so that we're able to keep, we're hoping for six feet in all classrooms. That's our goal. If we can't get there, we have the masks, we also have the barriers. So please just keep that in mind. This is a George Washington classroom. George Washington, for almost all classrooms, have desks in them, and you'll see as we go up through the grade levels, when you have a desk, they're all facing the same way, so that children are not facing each other, they're separated, hopefully, at that six-feet spot. Joyce Kilmer, same thing, desks facing the same way. Ramapo Ridge, and then up at the high school, it's the same thing. In this, in this instance, they have their own, their own spaces, right? So they're not mixing with student materials. At the lower level, we always talk about shared materials, things like that. What we're going to be doing is making sure that if we're using shared materials, such as books, that we're leaving them separate, so that we can either A disinfect them or leave, leave them out for at least 72 hours, which is the new guidance that came out for books. But we're going to limit the amount of shared items. If we cannot clean them, we cannot use them, okay?
And just to shout out to our, our building principals, you'll see in the Ramapo Ridge slide, we have two different classroom environments. It looks different. We have, you know, larger desks, we have a smaller classroom, and our principals are out there with measuring tape, making sure that there's six feet of distance from one seating to, to the next. So I think it's really important to note that our building principals are going through those classrooms and getting everything set up physically.
There are a lot of moving parts, and, and I would love to say that in, in education, that the kids just come in and they get plopped into their desks, and we, we get, we get started learning, and then they have to go. But there's a lot of other factors and variables that go into planning and ensuring that there's, that there's a healthy and safe experience for our students and our staff. So as we continue to go along, you'll learn more, but this is just one of the pieces of that decision-making process. As was shared by Dr. Ravino, we have, we have decreased the population. That significantly helps us to ensure that, that, that the students are not on top of each other during the day because we want to create that distance. At the K-5 level, we are going to do, we are going to keep our students, when possible, in the same room. There's not going to be movement around, and, and that's going to ensure that their, their space is their space. We also made the decision as a district, at this time, we will not be providing lunch or recess. That brings on a whole new set of challenges that we feel as though we want to get into the space, learn what it's like in the space, refine our approach. And as Mr. Farr said, once the data starts to come in, they say that, that things are improving, and we're ready to take that next step, that'll be another consideration for us to layer in on those second and third phases. At the secondary level, obviously, we can't keep our kids into, in one space. Both at the 4-5 level for JK and the 6-12 level, we are not using lockers. We feel as though that creates, that creates challenges for us to keep them away from each other, and at this time, there's, the benefit of that does not exceed the risk in us continuing in that fashion. So a, at the secondary level, we are decreasing the capacity of our students. Again, as, I don't know who's going to be doing the signage part, we'll be sharing that there's going to be signage throughout our building to educate our students and staff the proper way to move about our building. I know that sounds silly, but education is extremely important for all of us involved, because this is new. So there'll be signage throughout the building, which will be more detailed. But to speak to this piece, we're looking at where and how we can create a fluid pattern of students going in directions that they're not crossing. But if they do at the secondary level, we're, we're not in panic mode. Again, we have the coverage of our masks, and we also have the decreased population. So we are comfortable in that space right now.
Okay, as we look for, forward to curriculum implementation, this has been on a lot of people's minds because our kids weren't with us from March through June. So we're really looking at, are there gaps, right? Did we not get to everything? So when you're talking about learning acceleration, the fear, right, in education is that, well, since we didn't actually physically, we weren't in the same room with the child from March till June, now we have to teach everything that they should have learned, and then teach everything that we have to teach now, right? And that will overwhelm the teacher, and it'll overwhelm your children, and we don't want to do that. And that's actually not best practice. So when you look at implementing curriculum, you're going to look at a couple of things. Number one, identifying what was taught from March through June. And then you're going to say, okay, what has to be taught in the curriculum coming up in the, in the current year? And you're going to say, in March through June, we'll put that aside, and we'll say, what are the key things that were, were taught? So for instance, in, let's say, a third-grade classroom, fractions are always huge. We need to teach fractions, they always happen to come at the end of the year, which is torture for our kids, because that's when we're beginning to pay attention to fractions. But they didn't get that in person. When I go to fourth grade, I'm still teaching fractions. So how can we marry the two together without overwhelming children with understanding what the prerequisite was in third grade, to then marry them in fourth grade? And not stop our curriculum? We also have to understand where our children are, and understand that not all of them maybe did virtual learning at home, and some of them did. So they might be in different places, and that really lends itself to our assessment piece. And in our Instructional Task Force, we really, we've talked a lot about how do we, how do we assess children but not overwhelm them? We don't want to overwhelm them. So when you look at our first two weeks together, we really have to lean on our SCL committee, that social promotional piece, and know that we have to assess children. But it's okay, because we all need to breathe and be in the same space together. So first, we're going to focus on the child. We're going to focus on getting them, getting them acclimated to what the new normal is in a classroom. And then we can start to layer in assessment. And layering in assessment is not sitting next to your child as soon as two weeks are up. Now it's one-on-one, now you have to read to me, now you have to show me calculus, that's not, that's not it. It's layering in informal assessments, anecdotal notes, sitting with children, sitting in small groups, understanding where they are, and then layering in our screeners. So screeners are just our general assessments that we normally would do. So at the lower level, we always are giving a TC running record, right? We want to see where they are. We're always going to give a math assessment. At the upper levels, students normally would have closed out their year and then rotated to the next level class. Those teachers are just going to be very cognizant, especially in the math department, to to understand where they would have come in with knowledge, see where they are. And then as we talked about in that accelerated learning plan, marry it with concepts they're going to be learning together. So when we look at assessment, there are a lot of things that we do normally. So it's not going to throw your children off. This is not as if we're bringing in a new program or a new system. It's all things they normally could do. And the benefit of it is when we're looking at assessments, we would love to do them in person. But we have worked with Ruth Davis, we've worked with a lot of our outside companies to say, how can we do this virtually? We have to. And we're able to use a lot of the screeners we already have to be able to do it virtually or in person. And then that leads us to our data groups and then how do we proceed, right? Because we talked about those gaps. So after we have all those assessments done, we have data collection teams that are going to be set up in each one of our schools where we can discuss the data as a whole class and see where the gaps may be or where we need to push children. And then we can also look at individual children because some children that might have been on our radar before or might not have been on our radar before, might have taken a different turn, right? Some may have excelled and some may need some more supports. And those data teams are going to look at the information and come up a plan, with a plan for not only those individual students, but the group as a whole.
This slide is extremely important for us to share with all of you and especially to our staff. We know that in these, these new times, there comes a feeling of uncertainty. When we went in, as Mr. Gliott said, into the remote environment, that was a real, it was a fast change. It was something that we were, you know, it was new for all of us. And I can't thank the teachers and the administrators enough for working together to build their capacity in delivering remote instruction. The PD that happened last spring was extremely thorough. But it's, it can't be something that's a one and done experience. When I was able to experience that PD that was done from supervisor, administrator to teacher, but also it was, there were a lot of things that were done teacher to teacher. I was able to sit in a number of sessions that teachers were teaching each other how to use different resources and devices and techniques. And that's something that's extremely powerful for our teaching community. That being said, we're not done. There's a lot of other things that we can learn and continue to grow and give our teachers a sense of confidence and calm in delivering instruction in this new world. So that being said, we were able to sit down with the instructional task force. They provided us recommendations that they feel are extremely important for us to provide to our teachers. We sat with MEA leadership and gathered some ideas from them as well and we'll continue to do that. That's where Thunderbird Academy came out. The staff received yesterday an invitation to Thunderbird Academy. What that is, it's two days this summer that they're able to take part in remote professional development. We know that the summer can be chaotic. So if they can't take part in that remote learning at that time, we're going to be video recording it and putting it on our, on our teachers' technology website so they can utilize that when they're, when they're ready. This is something that, the themes that we're utilizing for August 12th and August 18th were really the most important pieces of our systems right now. But obviously we'll continue to layer in new experiences and learnings, learning opportunities as we get more information from our teachers. When we spoke to the MEA building leadership today, we explained to them that it's extremely important that we continue to have these conversations so we can be attended to their needs along the lines of learning and growing. So everyone feels more confident, comfortable in delivering this virtual learning. It spans a number of different ideas. There's, I'm not going to go into the specificity of it, just out of respect for time. But as I said earlier, we're creating a library or a catalog of these learning opportunities for teachers to go to when they're, when they're ready or when they need it. Teachers, we have over 300 teachers in the district with different needs. The last thing we want, we ask our teachers not to do it to our students, we can't do it to our teachers. It's not a one-size-fits-all model. So we want to make sure that we're supporting them where they are. Another piece that's very important, we said how focused we were on facilities and facilities management. We are going to be working with the studio staff and educating them on our increased protocols. They'll be taking part in training to ensure that we have and we all, everyone here is confident that our buildings will be attended to and we're very happy about that. Last but not least, this is something that we wanted to get going last year, but things were happening so fast, we weren't able to do it and we're committed to doing it this year. We are going to continue our parent academy offerings, but obviously the focus of our parent academies are going to change. In their here and the now, we feel it's important for us to provide our parents, especially at the elementary level, even though we're decreasing the amount of expectations of that virtual experience, we want to build the capacity of our community because we need that partnership. The only way that this is going to work is we work together. This is not something that can only be school-based or home-based. Once that partnership is created, that's when success is going to happen. So we're going to create a couple of different offerings on whether it's instructional techniques and delivery. But also, as we said earlier, this is a crazy time for everybody. There's a lot of emotions and stress that's put on our families. And we have a number of experts within our district that can, that can provide resources and strategies to our parents if they would like to attend on how to navigate this online hybrid virtual world, how to navigate the emotions of our students, whether it's in home or at school, and really how to just adjust to this new norm, as I said. So we will be putting those together, we'll be sending those out. But when we say professional development, it's not just for one population. We feel that if we can get a comprehensive approach to that, that's when most success is going to happen.
While I rarely desire to segregate our special needs population and speak separately of them in relation to our whole population, I felt it was crucial that I take a moment to just speak on special education students. I recognize, and we as a district recognize, that related services and programs are all part of what is mandated within an IEP. And IEPs were written this spring not with the intention of having reduced days or alternating programs. So we as a district are committed to providing as much of the service as we can, whether it is onsite, whether it is virtually onsite or virtually for students who elect to be home at all times. In order to do this, we're going to continue to have to collaborate with our parent population and work together because we know that for our students with the greatest learning challenges, we have to find that balance between implementing what is a mandated IEP commitment made between the parent and the district and what is right for our students. My office will continue to communicate with parents of special needs students. A separate communication is going out before the end of this week. And case managers will be in direct contact with families. We believe that the approach that is being offered for our general population is a good approach for our special needs students. However, there are some higher risk profiles that are going to need a little more individualized attention to their academic programming and my office is ready to take on that challenge. Paramount to a successful learning experience is the social and emotional status of our community. We are tasked with implementing existing programs, recommending new programs, and offering tiered interventions for students and addressing student wellbeing and staff wellbeing.
The Parents, Family and Community Subcohort provides support for parents about the hybrid and the hybrid and a distance learning experience. The Nurses Contact Tracing Committee focused on contact tracing protocol. They took a class at Johns Hopkins University online. Applications for students and families from a medical standpoint and establishing protocol for entering and exiting district buildings. The Student Wellbeing Committee, I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge Craig Alfano, who was my co-chair on this committee. He's a Child Study Team member, Mawa High School graduate, lives in Mawa. So it's hard to soul listen to every, every little bit of this committee. If I was already stated, masks and face covering, the face shields must be worn by all students. If you haven't had a chance to check out the video that we made, the mask video, it's fantastic. Just breaks down the barriers for those students, for those K through five kids to feel just a little more comfortable with wearing a mask. We know the masks are going to be messed up like shoes. Kids put on anyone's pair of shoes. A student needs to find a mask that's going to fit them. One mask that works, to me, is not going to work for Miss Rizal. We know that education at Mawa is paramount. That's what we do. This committee, and I've said it to Miss Rizal when first, I said, nothing works if this committee doesn't do what it needs to do. But it's first and foremost, everything that we are doing, everything we're talking about tonight is for the students. So the district, with the hybrid schedule, the biggest piece that happened in March that we struggled with was the socialization. Getting kids to be social. They could not be social. Like I said before, things are going to be different from March to September. The socialization piece is going to be a little bit better because we're hybrid. Kids are going to be able to interact on a smaller scale, but they'll still be able to interact with their peers. I noticed that the Mawa football and the outside of school, the Mawa football, cheerleading, soccer, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, all that socialization piece that was not there in March is there now. So that adds another nice element. So we're trying to get at that mindset for our kids and for parents that March is going to be like September. The socialization is going to be different. So over the last few years, our district has been ahead of the curve on mindfulness practice. We were the first district in Bergen County to offer students a mindfulness class that they can enroll in at the high school. We've been doing it for four years. So we have members on, we have teachers on staff, supervisors on staff, who are experts in mindfulness training. And we've had professional development in the last two or three years. And now, we've already had in place, now we're just going to pull it and we're going to use it. It's already there. Now it's going to incorporate it into everything that we're doing. There'll be counselors in the building checking in with students regularly, at regularly scheduled times, resume sessions, or popping into the office. We've set up our offices, at least at the high school, to be six feet apart where students can come in and discuss issues and concerns. So we understand that the student wellbeing and the importance that takes rolls through everything else. Staff wellbeing was another sub cohort and they made recommendations for staff relative to their own wellness and relative to what they need to support their students. Teachers know they can do this. They're teachers, okay? You put them anywhere, they're going to be able to survive and be able, they're going to be able to do such a great job as long as they have, what we're focusing on is the time. Teachers need the time. So to best prepare staff members to run their classes on this hybrid system, the district has modified their schedule, okay? Instead of starting on September 1st, like some districts are, we're starting on September 8th. That will allow four additional professional development days where teachers can work together, share ideas and get prepared and ready for the students to come in on September 8th. We've already talked about every other Wednesday where beginning September 16th, teachers will have that opportunity to make adjustments on the fly. Just like anything else, they see something happening on Monday and Tuesday, they can make an adjustment for their Thursday and Friday if we're moving beyond. So giving that opportunity to really just take a deep breath and not feel so rushed. At the building level, principals provide opportunities to reestablish connections. And they include, but not limited to, we've done staff yoga in the past, there's social spirit days, and providing resources and opportunities for ongoing reflection. So that's the big key, is giving teachers time to process and be able to get additional resources to implementing their classes.
Can I just add to this slide? I know that a staff survey has been sent out to all of our teachers, care professionals and other staff members. I'm still in the process of reaching out individually to any staff member who requested an individual meeting with me. As Dr. Natoro has already shared, an additional staff survey will be going out tomorrow related to any additional needs our staff members may have. And I am committed to make contact and connect with each staff member who has requested soon. So the survey that goes out tomorrow will ask for information based on additional needs and I will certainly be in touch. Thank you.
Parents, Families and Communities, this is another one of the SLE sub cohorts. My wife and I are both educators. We've assumed to be kindergarten and second grader. And even with all our experience in education, going on 26 years, we still found it difficult to manage to teach our students. We understand that. And we kept that in mind. As part of the driving force of the SLE, this part of the sub cohort was giving, giving parents, families, a blueprint of resources to make the new learning environment manageable. With my one son, it seemed like I had to learn and log on to a new website every single day. I was doing an app website, reading an app website. The next day I was getting another reading website. I was trying to keep track of how to navigate all these different websites and the passwords. One of the things we're going to implement is giving, giving parents early on the how-to guide for all the different resources and websites we'll be using so it's an easy access. In addition, we provide resources on how to get kids to wear masks, utilizing mindfulness at home, how to talk to children about going back to school, mentoring resources, relationship building and socialization. These are all things are under the umbrella of the Parents, Family and Community where we're trying to get, to help parents make this September better than the March. A couple of things I want you to keep in mind. The backbone of any effective classroom, one of the first things I was taught when I, when I first started teaching, was routine, establishing a routine, okay? Nothing gets done in a classroom without discipline and structure. That discipline and structure, my wife and I actually kind of lost a little of this when we started teaching our sons. We'll do it later, we'll do it later. But we realized, going back to the basic fundamentals, is that establishing a routine that works. Students want it, children need it, and it takes the guesswork out of the expectations for it and they appreciate it. So we're going to provide students, parents with resources on how to keep that structure going. Because that's why we're so effective here at Mawa High School, their structure. They come in and do this, this and this. That same type of structure, and we're going to give resources for that, has to be implemented at home. In my 26 years in education, I know that parents are the best teachers. That's where, that's where they learn everything, foundation of everything that we build on as educators. So it's important, it's vitally important that parents remain positive. We know this is not the ideal setting for your son and daughter. We know that. We're going to make the best of it. But they're going to feel awful of you. If you remain positive, if you remain upbeat about September, about picking out the cool mask and about how excited they're going to be to go in to meet with some of their friends, they're going to feel up to that. They're also going to feel off your trepidation. I mean, not sometimes, we're all in that same boat. But as the adults, as the leaders and educators, okay, that's the, that's the role that we have to, as parents, we have to fulfill.
The Social Emotional Learning Committee provided a whole host of really helpful resources that are found in our reopening plan. So the reopening plan that's going to go live on our website tomorrow is rife with all of those resources available to our parents and families in the district. So, thank you.
Childcare, it's a pressing question. A pressing question. It's different for each family. We have over almost 300,000 students and families and not one family situation is exactly the same. We understand that. And that goes until we talk about the social emotional learning piece and everything else that we do. We've coordinated with the YMCA for childcare and aftercare for Betsy Ross, GW, Lenape Meadows and JK. They'll be providing resources and information at a later date. And part of the SEL committee will also provide, will provide a comprehensive list of local resources, childcare facilities, babysitting resources to help with the childcare piece that we know is on everyone's mind.
If I can just jump in about the before and aftercare, again, I'm going to go back to the emails. A lot of the emails were specific to what is the duration or the time of that, of that care. They'll be providing, they can provide care before the AM session. They can provide care for after the PM session, but they also can provide care throughout the day. So just so everyone's aware, I know there was a question that people had. Obviously, before, it was before care or after care. We will be able to provide for, obviously there's a limit, but they will be able to provide all three. We will be able to provide for, obviously, there's a limit, but they will be able to provide all three.
As Mr. Gliotta shared, part of the SEL committee's responsibility was working with the school nurses and our amazing district nursing staff in collaboration with the administration and within buildings are working to ensure that student health and wellness continues to be our priority and that we all stay healthy. The nurses are trained in the contact tracing and are expertly coordinating with town and county resources in order to make sure that we are able to do this if, and unfortunately, when needed. The nurses are active in providing recommendations for health policies and facility changes to address matters of risk and risk mitigation. We are creating isolation locations. We are outfitting our nurses' offices with HEPA filters and they're being installed prior to the start of the school year. The nurses are also working with us to collaborate on policy. We are in the process of finalizing our policy recommendations to the board that will enhance the current policies that we have related to student wellness. Our policy will direct staff and students to stay home when unwell or when able to respond to the attestation questions. Our policies will clarify the response of the district for families or staff when formally diagnosed with COVID or when in contact with the virus without diagnosis. These policies will be disseminated to families for complete understanding of the mandates.
For facilities, as mentioned earlier, facilities was the co-chair for that group as well as with Mr. Romero, our supervisor of buildings and grounds. Facilities cover many different areas. To address these, over the next couple of slides, we're going to split them into four different subgroups. These are the same subgroups that we discussed then separately within our committee. Those groups are transportation, student flow, entry, exit, and common areas, cleaning protocols and schedules, and food services.
We felt it was really important to conduct facilities walkthroughs. We asked two members who are parents in our district and also members of our facilities task force, Dr. Kay and Mr. Duffield. Dr. Kay is a pediatric doctor, and Mr. Duffield was responsible as a safety specialist in reopening Nespresso in New York City, those offices. So initially, I didn't believe that we needed outsider's perspective. However, as we went through each of our six buildings, we got on a bus, all the windows were open, there was no air conditioning. Dr. Natoro almost passed out. But what we gained from Dr. Kay and Mr. Duffield was really valuable in just discussing classroom configurations. We identified multiple entry points and exits. We reviewed age-specific signage. Their perspective was really helpful. So through our walkthroughs, we went over things like directional signage and floor markings that would assist with classroom travel if that occurs, although, you know, our attempts are at minimizing classroom travel and also opportunities to decrease congregation. So these are just sample signage that we are having made for the district. We will have signage in all classrooms, all hallways, all entry points. You know, at our entry point, if a student or staff member doesn't feel well, there is a reminder that they are to report that to a staff member who will then engage our school nurses. Dr. Kay reminded all of us that we need age-appropriate signage. So this is signage that will be in every bathroom at the elementary school level. And also, we are going to have markings. So at our elementary school level, we're focusing on creating opportunities for our students to remain socially distant. I know Dr. Ravino has been really adamant in terms of students need to be reminded at the younger grades. And also, we're going to make every attempt to identify one-way traffic patterns through hallways where appropriate, one-way stairwells where appropriate, and also using arrows throughout each of our buildings that directs student flow.
Cleaning protocols. We've developed incredibly thorough and detailed cleaning plans using the best equipment. Mawa made a good investment in some of the best equipment. We have some on display here, especially electrostatic disinfectant sprayers. We have one per building for each one of our schools, ready to use for September. We're also adding additional custodial staff. We have 28 full-time current staff here in Mawa, so we're adding six more. We also, as Ms. Rizal discussed, we are adding air quality control in some of the nurses' offices, HEPA filters, as well as verbate upgrade filters for our area lawyers in the district. As previous did, we're adding six additional full-time employees. These employees will clean and sanitize each school building each day between the AM and PM sessions to ensure cleanliness. This in school includes school buses and bathrooms, two high areas. Air quality and HVAC filter management. Air quality is extremely important in our school buildings. Filters will be changed every three months. Many Mawa HVAC systems automatically mix fresh air in occupied rooms. In addition to mixing fresh air, our HVAC systems directly, windows will also be opened to include fresh air to be circulated in the rooms. On the next several slides, we're going to outline our extensive cleaning schedule for each one of the different aspects of a school building. This slide here shows the daily classroom cleaning checklist that our 28 full-time employees and the six additional employees will use on a regular basis. This is our daily classroom checklist. The next slide is our hallway checklist. This will be performed multiple times per day because it's one of the most heavily used areas in a school building. The next slide is our gym and staircase touchpoints. These will be sanitized even more than the hallways with our electrostatic sprayers. That'll allow us to get in, get out quickly, and disinfect everything. Offices are another priority of ours, and these are some of the touchpoints that we clean on a regular basis. And most importantly, restrooms, cleaned several times per day with specialty equipment. And I have a specialty equipment there that we're going to use for some of the bedrooms. Okay. Transportation. Some of the changes that we're making to our transportation procedures are going to include the items on the slide. And I do want to take a brief moment just to thank, we've had several conversations with our contracted bus providers over the last several weeks and months. They've all been very cooperative with working with us and assisting us to implement some of these procedures and ensure that their staff are ready to have them in place for the beginning of September. Drivers and students will be wearing PPE face covers while they're driving and transporting our students. We're going to be adding some parent professionals, Mawa staff, to ride the bus routes and supervise that procedures are enforced and maintained. Bus cleaning protocols, after each route that is driven, buses will be cleaned and wiped down. As stated before, this is going to be something that both our own bus drivers as well as our contractor drivers will be practicing on. Our own bus drivers will receive some in-district cleaning protocols before the start of the school year, and our contracted bus drivers as well. And again, I want to thank their cooperation with us. Will be sharing the guidelines with their employees as well and maintaining them throughout the year. For food services. We encourage families that are available to, as always throughout the year and at any time during the year, if you're eligible or if you think you may be, apply for free reduced lunch program using the district website. The forms are from the federal government and they're listed on the website. If there's any difficulty in navigating that, please let us know. And our food services team from Pomtonian Food Service Management will be happy to help you and assist. There'll be boxed to-do lunches that are going to be offered to students, all students, free, reduced, or paid students at the end of the school day. A menu is going to be designed and made available for pre-ordering, and we're working with Pomtonian in our ordering system to develop a pre-order system, online order system for that as well. There will be no snack or à la carte options during the day from the cafeteria. And similar to our drivers, our cafeteria staff from Pomtonian are going to be trained with additional training regarding food preparation, and this can be continually monitored along with the, through the Mawa Health Department. Similar to Mr. Romero's slides regarding cleaning during the day by our custodians, the food service area where lunches are going to be prepared and made is also going to receive similar cleaning regularly and throughout the day.
As we continue to say, there are a number of considerations that we have to continue to look into and make. When we went out last year, we were committed to ensuring that all of our students had the tools they needed to take part in that virtual experience. At the 612 level, the students all will be receiving a laptop. And at the K5 level, we will be doing the same thing that we did last year. We'll be sending out a survey to our K5 parents, asking about need and supporting of those who need that assistance, whether it's through the use of a laptop or through Wi-Fi services. So that will continue because we know that we need to provide the students with the tools in order to execute this program.
Fiscal impact and financials. And I want to start off by saying that throughout the entire planning presentation, the driving purpose of this is to provide what is best for the students. That was the driving force through this. Some of the fiscal impact implications. In late May 2020, we were told that our 2021 state aid for the year that had not even begun was already going to be cut at this state level by almost $200,000. For those that may not know, our 2021 budget had already been submitted to the county, approved by the board, before we were aware of what some of the implications for September would be. The additional custodians that were discussed by Mr. Romero, roughly, excuse me, six custodians per school, I'm sorry, in the district, will have a cost of roughly $28,000 per month. Additional substitutes per school, approximate cost of $282,000. The transportation adjustments to meet the schedule that we have designed and are proposing of approximately $225,000. And some of the other things that we have already committed to, since many, much of the destruction, instruction is going to be led from here in district. We've increased our capacity to provide internet service from the district. That's going to have a cost of approximately $42,000. And some of the PPE that we are purchasing, some of the masks, some of the shields, about $35,000 so far. These are not all costs that are going to be fully borne by the budget, by the 2020 budget. There are opportunities to offset these. We do want to mention CARES Act funding from the federal government that Mawa has received of $159,000. The NJBEU has also given us flexibility to use funds and savings from our reserve accounts from prior year funds to help offset some of the costs that we're going to incur within the 2021 school year.
So we've been talking, or we've mentioned several times about the proposed changes to the 2021 school calendar. It's on tonight's board agenda for approval by the board. We've proposed the following changes. October 12th was originally a professional development day with staff only in-house, along with June 23rd. We propose that those two days would be moved to September 3rd and September 4th for two reasons. The first is we feel that it's very important to get all of our staff in, to get comfortable in their spaces, comfortable in their own buildings amongst one another. And two, as Dr. Natoro has already mentioned, to have those professional development opportunities that are either individualized or departmentalized. And this is how it shapes moving forward.
When we started the closure in March, we felt it was important for us to have a hub of all this information that we're sending to our community. So we created a tab on our website that did just that. And when we looked at the traffic that we had on that website, we were encouraged that a number of people were utilizing that site to gain access to the communication that was provided, the resources, and all the information in between. We feel it's important for us to do the same for our reentry website. As you can see, we had over 70 slides in this presentation, and there's a lot of information. We know that it's hard to really digest all of it at once. So in order for us to do this in an intelligent, logical way for our community, we wanted to put it in one place that they could access it when they're able to and really digest the information on their own time. So if you look at the screen, the way that the site is going to be, is going to be situated is we'll have all of our communication to date in one space. We'll also have a little blurb of showcasing the people who were extremely paramount in providing information and ideas for our reentry. We're going to carry over, because we feel it's very important, the general health-related resources on that page. There are a number of organizations and information for people to use depending on their needs at the time. The elementary schedule, as I said, we shared it on a number of different times, but we know that there still needs to be a place to house that information so you can go back and access it for elementary, middle, and high school. The ranching plan that Mr. Ferr has and Dr. Fets has shared on a number of occasions today, we'll be placing that there as well as the reentry presentation. All of the videos also will be housed in this space, and we're going to continue to update it throughout this entire process. Again, we're committed to communicating on a number of different levels with our community, and we don't want people to miss things. So if by chance you miss an email or you missed a video, you'll know where to go to get the information at that time. We're going to be, this site will be going live tomorrow. We'll make sure that we advertise that to our community, and we'll probably couple that with our survey that we're sending out, asking the families to share their decision on remote as well as transportation. What's next? We're almost there, we're almost there. What's next? Obviously, as we shared, a lot of this is stuff that I've already said, so I don't want to be redundant. I respect for everyone's time. Please continue. If you have questions, to reach out to your building administration for those building-specific questions. But if it's more district-specific, please use that Mawa reentry email address. The FAQ, if people have not seen it yet, that was sent out yesterday. And again, that will also be on our website. The surveys are coming. And what we're going to do with those surveys, as I shared, it's very important for us to solidify our schedule and our procedures depending on the needs, whether it's in school or remote. So there's a lot of moving parts right now, which we try our best to provide a comprehensive presentation to all of you. And I'm not making excuses, but please know there's constant new information that's constantly being shared with us, and we're adjusting and modifying as we go to make sure that we are successful and effective. So the more information we get from our community, the better suited we're going to be in preparation for this. So please keep an eye out, and please talk to the community, your neighbors, your friends, and remind them to look in their email and answer the surveys so we can keep going.
So to close, these are some upcoming So to close, these are some upcoming dates, reminders to staff and our school community. Obviously, this isn't the end of our communication with everyone. We plan to have building-specific and all district opportunities for engagement. You'll see here, staff members, there will be ongoing individual meetings. We will have a faculty forum and as Dr. Ntoro already shared, and thank you to Ruth Davis for getting us organized for August 12th and 18th to provide specific professional development for our staff members. We also, through dialogue with your principals, they'll be able to clarify any building-specific matters. A lot of those meetings are taking place over the course of the next two days. And again, that was done strategically because we know that this presentation is going to spawn some specific questions related to your respective buildings. Through our parent academy, we'll have parents be able to learn further about our curriculum, our subject matter related to social emotional learning. And as Dr. Ntoro has already shared, it's worthy of repeating. Our reentry site will go live tomorrow and the plans submitted to the NJDOE and the board event will be made available to all of you. It looks like this. It is an 85-page document that will undoubtedly change along the way. As those changes are made, we will communicate those changes and update those changes on our district website. We will also share this plan with our local police department, our local health department, and our office of emergency management. At the end of the day, this was two hours of a lot of coordination amongst a whole lot of people. We want to thank everyone. You know, Dr. Fitz, we had a brief central office meeting earlier today and in his own sage way, we sat in silence and he said twice after this presentation, he said, "Let's listen, let's listen." So our goal here is to listen to our community and that listening will inform our decision-making moving forward. Dr. Fitz, would you like to close us?
That's very real that I can say to close. This is work that is in progress. It will be ongoing, okay? It is not the end. It's really the beginning, okay? I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your unconditional support. Continue to give it to us. Ask us questions. That's how we can get better. That's how we can address the needs of children and to address the needs of our community. We can get through this. And I look forward to continuing to work with all of our staff and colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you.
On this way?
We'll do the logistical switch.
So to close, I think it's important, since we've worked so collaboratively with MEA leadership, to share what our MEA president has expressed in the Q&amp;A chat feature on this webinar. On behalf of the members of the MEA, I would like to start by thanking the administration for their efforts in putting together this reopening plan. I've appreciated the inclusion of MEA leaders on the task force as well as the willingness of administration to meet with me and other members of the MEA executive team throughout the development of this plan. From the start of this process, there have been questions, big and small, relating to instruction, schedules, and most importantly, health and safety. Many, but not all of those questions have been addressed in this plan and the FAQ document. However, at this time, my primary concern is not with the decisions being made by the district, but rather the broader context we find ourselves in. Just this week, we learned that the transmission rate of COVID has been increasing across the state. As a result, the governor reduced the limit on in-person gatherings at the same time we were planning for a return to school. The health and safety of students and staff is the most important issue in this discussion and I don't think it's in dispute that the safest way to reopen schools is by doing so remotely. That said, I recognize that the district is following state and federal directives to reopen in person and unless there is a decision made at the county or state level to start the year remotely, the MEA leadership will continue working with administration to try to create the safest and most educationally enriching in-person experience possible for our staff and students. We felt it was important to share that publicly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay, let's go back to our meeting and have asked for a motion to proceed on 22A, which is the reopening plan.
Will you give us a few minutes for questions or should we? Or you can have a question to me?
Sure.
Sure, usually after we, before we do the...
Move it first.
Yeah, it's move it first.
Move it first.
It's, we can do them separately, break them apart, do them separately. So 22A, they have a motion to proceed in 22A to reopen. Ms. Kozmorski, seconded by Mr. Gala. Do we have any questions, concerns, comments, yes?
I guess, very well put the reopening plan on the line. First thought, it was more akin to threading needles. It's the best of the possible world we could get with what we're doing. People are yelling us, "What about boots?" With that being said, Andy basically hinted on kind of where my mind is at is you've done all this amazing work. You're in the middle of doing all this amazing work when Governor Murphy dropped the hammer and said, "Yeah, oh, by the way, we can do remote as well." The question I have, I guess, is having done all this work, what happens tomorrow when he comes out and says, "Guess what? We're going to go all remote for two or three months." And I guess the question's already prepared for that and what is that going to look like not to put you on the spot?
You're not putting us on the spot. That's something that we talked about during our instructional task force discussions. Actually, Andy and a couple of the members asked that same exact question. To be quite honest with you, our goal currently is for reentry. But what I can tell you is the foundation of that remote experience was built in March through June. I'm not saying that that's the way it's going to look if we go back remote. There are going to be changes and adjustments that we're going to work with our existing task force committee members that it's already put in place. We already have a rhythm and working relationship together with them. So it's only logical for us to continue that work together. And we, again, need to take a look at what is best for our kids and our staff and coupled with professional development, guidance from the state, and then us leaning on our colleagues in other towns of working together. As you've shared perfectly, a lot of this information is just on the fly and we get it and then we have to really decipher, what does that mean? And there's confidence in working with others to make sure that we're not missing anything and we're hitting the mark in providing a quality education to Mawa. So that is something that we're still working on. That's something that is on our radar. But as of right now, we're hyper-focused on putting the plan in place, presenting it to you guys, and enacting it. But once that changes, we'll have to shift gears and we'll respond accordingly.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so I'd like to take a second just to thank you guys for putting this together because it's an incredibly thorough and well-thought-out, very thoughtful piece of work. You know, it's difficult to say, okay, let's think of all the possible scenarios, anything that could possibly happen that hasn't already happened in 2020, right? And put it into PowerPoint slides. I think this is, you know, obviously the work of a lot of different people. You did a great job recognizing that not everything is in here, you know, it can't be. I know we have our, the virtual office hours coming up tomorrow and Friday. Knowing that there is a good chunk of the town that doesn't have power, might not have internet connectivity. I don't know if there's a way maybe they can, or I don't know what the plan is as far as maybe recording those sessions to be, you know, played later or if there's thoughts of maybe doing a round two once power comes back up in town. But I think, you know, there needs to be some consideration for the people who, you know, physically, you know, with everything else going on. You know, how to handle that.
Obviously, there's a new wrinkle that was created.
There's two more wrinkles.
Right. Right, because we're not done yet. But as it pertains to that, we will talk to the administrators. You bring up a very good point along the lines of the way that people can attend to those meetings. We did say that this first round of questions, we can still continue tomorrow. But if by chance, and we'll talk as administrative team, if another question, another one is necessary, we'll obviously do that too. Please also know that the building administrators are getting questions from parents too and even that that personal one-on-one connection is important. So we're going to take a look at all the different opportunities and please know that the community's not going to go without answers for sure.
Yeah, just a suggestion, like we're recording this tonight, if we could record those, maybe have them posted on the website for playback later on. That might eliminate a lot of, you know, if there is a need for a second one, you know, having those available.
Yeah, we'll talk to the administrators and work something out.
Yes, Dr. Murphy. Well, we're going to go like this, but I'm too sure. I just want to say tremendous job. Thank you very much, Kyle, Greg, Linda, Mike, Dennis, Lisa, Dominic. Fantastic presentation and again, best-case scenario. So let's hope that all of your hard work, you know, kind of pays off and we can actually put this plan into place. Two questions I have. One, could you just speak a little to the community virtual town hall, Mike? If you guys, is that formalized? Is that definitely, are we going to, is that date formalized? And what's that format? I'm just curious for what, you know, parents out there, is that going to be something that we're continuing with or have you decided about that?
It's not formalized yet. It's, we felt like it was a logical opportunity for us to create another moment for the community to ask their questions. The format of that, I think, is going to be created depending on the office hours that the administrators are going to take on the next two days. We're going to debrief with the administrators and really get an understanding of what were the questions? What were the concerns? Were there any themes in that experience as well? And really build according to what the community needs. So to be quite honest, full disclosure, we put so much time and preparation into this.
Fun.
Please don't take, we feel that there's value in that.
Yeah.
And we also want to put it together in a thoughtful way that's going to meet the need of the community. So I think over the next two days, we're going to continue to get more information so we can sculpt it in what the community needs. So yes, we are going to do it. How it's going to be run, we'll figure that out.
We already have a running to-do list, so that is not running to-do.
So that's tomorrow morning and December.
Yep, it's on the yellow post.
And again, it was more back to Rick's point and the points that there are probably a lot of people, unfortunately, with the power issue and the Wi-Fi issue and I think even cable companies down. I mean, you know, suddenly this came like out of nowhere and hit us. So like many things this year. But, and I would encourage, if there is a way for that, to have a little bit of a live component and I don't know if we're going to do it just like sending questions or not. But I think the dialogue somehow is also important. And I think, I say it all the time, my board members know it. Sometimes people want to be heard and sometimes people want to just express themselves in a structured format. So if there's a way that we can do that, I think, you know, my suggestion as a board member is, I think it will give us, kind of it'll go a long way if there's a way to have some component. My second question is on contact tracing. And if, I just wanted to know the rationale, and maybe that's Kyle's group or who did that, about rapid testing. Because I have to tell you, this has come up even like in my own personal life. I have two children going to college and one went and had to have like three COVID tests already just going to school and coming back. And so the question was, look, if you have a test and it takes 10 days for a result, is there some reason as a district that even though I know it's not part of CDC guidelines, but is there perhaps something that we shouldn't be, you know, it's sort of like, you know, guidelines keep changing, masks, no masks, this, no mask. Maybe we should consider being on the forefront of having an opportunity because that will only then provide us with better opportunities for contact tracing. So I just wondered what that, you know, decision and thinking was.
That decision was discussed, you're absolutely right, at the whole Alvin Wellness and as well as the facility side. And when we worked with a number of different people, medical professionals included, what the information that we were given is that especially at the elementary and middle school level, our students oftentimes present as asymptomatic. So that temperature check is not as effective as that would be for an adult. We are getting temperature checking on adults. We're also making sure that when you're, we're so committed into making sure that the kids are not having that hurting experience. When we did look at the different rapid testers, many of them had very, to be quite honest with you, on our arrival and dismissal, there's a lot of students coming at one time. And even though it's more of an efficient way to do it, it's still going to create that hurting mentality or hurting dynamic. So what's going to happen there is we feel that the risk reward is not at that place. When we did lean on our medical professionals, they did agree. They do feel as though the adestation is effective. They do also feel as though the way in which we're creating our space, having our coverage and protecting on all other fronts, they felt like that was adequate and effective. So what she spoke, what they spoke to us about was really coverage, disinfectant, we're cleaning, and space. And all three of those, when we're setting up our space, we adhere to all the things that were needed. Now, don't get me wrong, please understand that as we shared, I forget, I think it was, I think it was Ms. Rizzo, this is a community effort too. So when we were asking parents to answer those adestation questions, there is a sense of, we're in this together, Dr. Fitz played perfectly. So we are going to have all those coverages and safeguards and all the things in between. But even if somebody doesn't answer that adestation form, we still have opportunities to do random temperature checks. And our teachers, if our teachers feel as though, you know, you're not feeling too well, why don't you head down to the nurse? That's another layer of protection as well. But at this time, we felt as though adding that to our entire student population was not going to be as...
And I wasn't even sure about the entire population. I just wondered if we have cohorts or groups together, classroom, et cetera? If that's not something, because then we're relying on people to go out, you know, outside of the district for testing, right? Like say, if someone finds out that they are exposed or have symptoms... I guess that's just a question to ponder is that then people will have to, you know, go outside. And the issue became the timeframe. Just in my son's case, it began the timeframe to have exposure and then not to know for 10 days. Became, there were a lot of issues of do you then fully quarantine? Do you not? Do you expose? Do you not? It, it was just complicated in a very minuscule setting. So it's just something, you know, can, if we can get access to it, perhaps as a district, we should consider it. Not necessarily to test everybody. I meant more subgroups or staff or when needed kind of thing. Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to thank everyone.
Just wanted to echo what everyone else said, that this plan is remarkably thorough and thoughtful. And as a parent of, of two students in the district, I feel very comfortable saying that you're about to school. And I want to thank everyone that's in this room and everyone that's listening that was part of the task force for, for putting the time and the effort into it. It's obvious that, what'd you say, 84 pages was the final plan? It's, it's obvious a lot of thought and effort went into it. I wanted to piggyback also on what Crema was saying about the, the health end. I want to ask a question that I know is, is answered in the FAQ, but I think it's important that we maybe just verbalize it tonight for those that are watching. Because I think it's a, it's a concern that a lot of people do have in the district. And it's about a student or a staff member being diagnosed with COVID. What that looks like within our district? What do we do? What is the procedure? How does that impact, how does that impact the, the classroom? How does that impact the building? How does that impact siblings and, and family members? And, and again, I, I want to recognize the fact that I understand this plan is the overview. It's not the nuts and bolts. I'm not looking to get nuts and bolts in every single topic that we're going in tonight. But I think this is a, a very important aspect of the plan. And I think a lot of people do have questions along those lines. And, and hopefully we can maybe kind of discuss a little bit more now.
The question that you're asking specifically relies on the district to create policy that we have to present to you, which we will do. At this time, we're relying on CDC input and formulating that policy for you. The CDC's directive is very sincere in not denying educational opportunities to children based simply on symptoms that the CDC believes can be attributed to a numerous range of childhood illnesses. So there is an obligation by the district to have an immediate response should someone within that classroom ultimately have a positive test. But it relies specifically on positive test results. So Dr. Morphy's question regarding rapid testing is one that, you know, we've begun to explore and take a good look at and see if that could be of value of our, to our community. So exclusion, like I started with, cannot occur unless there is an affirmed diagnosis. With an affirmed diagnosis, there is an obligation to shut down the classroom in which the directly affirmed was housed. There is a sanitation protocol that has to go into place. And there is a seclusion protocol for the person who tests positive as well as for the students who may have been exposed. The good case scenario relative to education is that by virtue of having a virtual option, children will never miss a beat of instruction should they be well enough to log on and participate. So the protocol will take into account what is the overarching obligation of wellness as well as the educational obligation that remains with the district. So there is recommendations from the CDC. That's another next step we're taking in crafting our plan and will be shared with the parents and the community directly. Because as I have stated in my presentation, there is an obligation to maintaining wellness for all of us amongst all of us. So of crucial importance right now is that if families are electing to travel, that they attend to the CDC guidelines relative to travel. And we ask that educators and students and families back up their travel by issuing the required quarantines that occur prior to enrollment on September 8th for our students and sooner for our faculty. But we are aware that that concern exists as to if a case should arise. We also are aware that we cannot go around diagnosing people without the procedures in place to do that through a medical venue. So it is a fine balance between confidentiality of medical needs and as well as advising the community when there is a concern. I want to make note that our district was one of the first districts who actually sent out communication in areas of concern preemptively back in March when we made aware of a parent who subsequently passed away due to COVID, who had a relative in one of our buildings. Faculty were notified who were in close contact with family members. So we do believe in the right for people to know, but we are also adamant about protecting the rights of health and wellness of the people. So that's my general answer to you with the commitment that we give you more once we finalize it and noting that the CDC just reissued new guidance today.
Kim, just a quick follow-up question on, and actually this is, I'm going to put, Mr. Pascal was not even in the presentation on the spot a little. I just want to clarify attendance policy because I know at the high school that can, that can create a little anxiety at times, Mr. Pascal. So I just want to clarify that if for some reason a student has to be quarantined and, you know, do the 14-day, is there going to be some ability? You know, if kids are, again, how, you know, we take this as a medical issue, et cetera? Just so the parents know that we will be, you know, flexible in our approach, especially with attendance. Just curious.
Yes, I, our, our current district policy handles attendance, okay? So if we need to be flexible, we certainly have the ability to do that on a case-by-case basis. So I don't want people to be concerned with that. But as Dr. D'Fiore and Mr. Bliata said during the presentation, attending school from September moving forward in whatever venue that is, is going to be very different than what we did from March until June, okay? So students who are, students who are at home at the high school level, there will be an ability for them to have attendance taken for virtual learners as well as for students who are physically in the brick and mortar schoolhouse, okay? The attendance policy, I believe in the reentry plan says that we will follow our existing policies. But again, depending on what the guidance is from the CDC, depending on what's happening within our local community, we will take all those things into consideration. And we will work with people on an individual basis as we always do.
Great. Appreciate that.
Again, I'd like to echo all the thanks to all the folks who worked so diligently and hard on this. I mean, essentially you're reinventing school from a paradigm that we, has been in place for 100 years and we're changing it relatively quickly. But we've absolutely done it very thoughtfully and with students, faculty and parents in mind. And it's, you're all to be congratulated for the effort. I have just sort of two general questions and then I have a bunch of specific slide questions. Dennis, you had mentioned that the, the schedule or the times for each school isn't completely dialed in yet, but you expect it to be dialed. I mean, so whatever we said in the slide, it was 8:45 or is it like plus or minus 10 minutes we're going to be adjusting to?
Yeah, less than that.
Right.
Yeah, less than that.
So just for parents who are starting to plan their care schedule and things.
Yeah, we're, we're talking.
We'll have that dialed.
Yeah, we're talking in a few minutes.
Okay.
And again, that will be solidified once all the transportation routes are confirmed.
I have a general comment. I know we have a, a community of non-English speaking parents. How can we make this presentation available to that cohort of folks so that they're dialed into everything we, we're expecting of them and what we're doing? This is sort of a situation where, you know, somebody said it once, I think Dr. Fitz said, you know, we're all in this together. It's, it's a single point of failure type of thing, right? We could do, you know, the cordless electrostatic backpack could be used perfectly. But if we have a parent who doesn't know what the rules of the road are or what our expectations are for them and they are, become a vector for the disease coming into our schools, all the effort that we've done and all the other effort that the other parents in that school might have done goes to, goes foul, right? So it's important that every member of our community understands our expectations for them and what their expectation should be of us. So the non-English speaking community, however, we can figure out how to get the message out to them. Just sort of a general comment.
That's a good comment. We, we can certainly translate this presentation, work with our ESL teachers throughout the district to see what kinds of supports we can, and what, what kind of opportunities to connect.
And we already have the parent academy available to the ESL community. So maybe that's another venue to sort of get the word out. There's a couple of, I'm just going to go through some slide questions. So asynchronous, synchronous learning. It's been explained to me, but perhaps that could be defined better in the slide when it goes public. So we talked, there was a slide talking about the supports we want to give to students in, who are in the in-person program. And, but we also have, we may have a large community of virtual learners as well. So how can we, and I guess you're inventing this as you're coming, is the, is the in-person, is the person-to-person support going to be provided for the virtual learning community? And I'd like to get away from that remote or virtual learning community and call it home-based learning. So it's a little more friendly. So I'm just, I know that's something that in your, in your to-do list. It's another one of those sticky notes, right?
Are you trying to change terms on this too?
Yeah.
So you're not only asking questions, you're changing terms.
Yes. So guys, it's social distance. I'm trying to figure out a something different than that as well.
Mike is effectively a wrinkle.
You might go past Kim's 10 minutes too.
Yes, you got it. I understand that your, your, your suggestion for rebranding.
Well, that's, I didn't know.
No, no, I have that. But, but the, the other piece is we're trying to use language that's consistent with the guidance from the governor. And I also don't want to confuse virtual learning with home instruction.
Right, right.
You know, that's the other, the other piece.
But again, you have to, we're still building that, you know, how we're going to connect faculty to the remote learning community in a sort of one-to-one or a small group setting.
And, and Dr. Vino put it perfectly. And so we know our population and that, that's when we're identifying the need of that population. So, you know, we, when we spoke to the MEA building-based leadership today, we gave them the same samples and explanations. And they had great questions of, well, what about this and what is this? And those are the questions and those are the comments that are going to drive the specificity of the supports. And, and, and that's why it's so important that we get the survey out. Then we can start to look at their academic profiles of the students who are going to that fully remote experience.
Yeah, and it's also, I think, setting the expectations for parents, both the in-person program and the remote program so that they know what customer service they could get from the school district in terms of supports for virtual students. In terms of the adestation component, I recently camped in Vermont. Vermont had this very elaborate thing called SARAH, it was from a company called Later. It was an automated contact tracing thing. Every day I got a text that said, do you have any of these symptoms? You said no, and they logged it and you went on. And then they, after you answered a certain number of times, they graduated you out of the program. So just saying that there's probably a solution there, you know, out there for you. There's an app. This is right up Ruth's alley here. There was some mention about shared Ivan Such's books and things. Then of course I immediately thought about like the media center activity and what that might look like. So we're redesigning that, you know, on the fly as well. That's another airplane we're flying in the air with duct tape. What about orientation for our new, for students like kindergartners? The orientation to JK, orientation to Grand Prairie, orientation to high school? And, you know, given the schedule and tightness of the time. So, so if you could reflect on that.
That's extremely important to us. That's something that the principals have been working on and continue to work on. Because, you know, Mr. Bliata played perfectly. Our priority right now is to make sure that the kids feel welcome and safe and connected to our school. So that is something that even, obviously we want to welcome back our, our returning students. But we haven't, the way that our district is broken up, there are a number of first new years or, or going into kindergarten, going into JK for fourth grade, going into the middle school, going to high school. Those are very important experiences that the administrative team are currently working on and will get out to the community.
Yeah, and, and that, and sort of, I mean, as later on, where we have that slide on all the dates, it's, August is chock full. So maybe blowing up that, that slide that just had September 8th starting, sort of backing up from that. There's a whole bunch of parent things and obviously faculty, PD, control insurance. One of the, Dr. Vino, you spoke about the assessments and how we're, we're basically doing the assessments consistent with path practice and procedure for remote learners. That's another thing we have to sort of invent, right? Is sort of how we're going to do that, the same type of assessment for our remote community, so.
Yeah, we've actually been working with different companies. So for instance, Everyday Math at the lower level, there's an online component called ConnectEd. So we've actually reached out to them. We also have reached out to our specialists in-house that know the online component of ConnectEd. So we can actually give all of our assessments with little tweaks virtually. So it would be a one-on-one session with their teacher or maybe a reading specialist and math specialist. Or you could do a whole live Zoom session where students were taking that math test at the same time. So we've, we've, we've thought through that piece, which is great. And that was, that was part of that instructional reentry committee. Just to make sure, hey, listen, if we're going to that virtual moment for everybody, do we, can we do it?
Right.
And just for that small community possibly that's choosing that, can we do it? And we can for assessment pieces, which is great.
Just two points of pride. Again, we've spent in this district a lot of effort on developing a professional development program, especially that peer-to-peer program and also our parent academy. So we have really strong foundations to do this. And by expanding and tailoring both PD program and parent academy to the situation is, is, it's an incredible advantage we have. Let's not talk about that. Lisa, office, virtual office hours potentially for child study teams?
Child study team members will be contacting parents directly. We will, we've created a whole matrix to address the needs relative to concerns for matters like compensatory services and other things like that. So those will be direct contacts. But I'm adamant as the child study team director that the first two or three weeks of school focus solely on the adjustment of our student population to the learning environment. So let me be very clear that there is not going to be hasty moves made regarding instructional needs of students until we're sure that they're fully acclimated to the learning environment that they're subscribing to. On top of that, I, I, along with Dr. Fitz, believe dearly that while it was a loss perhaps of some time between March and June, there is no way we're going to make up that loss overnight or even within one school year. Child study team and special services is certainly committed to our 18 to 21-year-old population so that they can transition successfully with immediacy. However, our commitment to our preschool through high school students is the time that it will take is the time that it will take and we are not setting timelines in that remediation and addressing those.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just bringing the idea of the virtual office hours for that community because they have.
That community is very accustomed to meeting privately via Zoom with our child study team. Every family had that option in the spring. We will resurrect that come later in the month of September.
And I know the YMCA don't have their whole program together yet, but is there anything we can do to help them or in terms of both capacity and readiness? And I'm assuming they're aware of our safety protocols and things, especially in cases where they're using our buildings?
Yeah, absolutely. We are working with the YMCA and we're thankful that they are able to afford this opportunity to our community and working with them. They do have their own procedures or protocols. They have a license given to them to operate their before-care and after-care program from the state of New Jersey, Department of Children's Families. So they have standards they need to meet and they are working with us to marry those standards with ours accordingly.
So we're all on the same page. We are. There was some mention about permanent subs in buildings and, and the preparation in terms of PD for subs. Are we, I mean, sort of something we haven't done necessarily in the past? Are we envisioning some sort of PD in terms of activating them to the procedures, protocol changes, the health stuff? procedures, protocol changes, the health stuff?
Yes, the the onboarding will look different for uh the substitutes in our building. Um, we we approached Kyle with a suggestion and commitment of two permanent subs in each building because, quite frankly, we we don't know what this is going to look like. And we believe we we need extra manpower in our buildings and we would like that manpower to be consistent um as opposed to having um strangers. So um right now, quite frankly, we don't know what it's going to look like, but uh securing those two extra hands on deck in each of our buildings.
But we're we're going to do an onboarding with them in terms of all of this. There's just so much stuff that's changed and to have them, again, single point of value, we don't want them to be a vector.
Absolutely. Our our permanent subs is going to work a little different than our our other substitute teachers. Um, Kelly Services, formerly Insight, would conduct most of the onboarding process. The permanent substitutes uh will will be pseudo in-house. Um, there will be a conversation had with all of them collectively while remaining socially distanced and wearing masks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh, yes.
Just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page before we vote, before we release this onto the website tomorrow, that this is, Dr. Dettoro can hear me on it, this is essentially a living document. So what gets, you know, published on the website tomorrow as guidance changes from Trenton and as the situation on the ground evolves, this is also going to evolve. So people just need to be aware of that. This is this is not it. This is it, but it's not it.
Absolutely.
And just to speak to that.
It's the 20 commandments.
Yeah, just speak about the closure plan that we had on on the first time around in March, from March to June. Um, we worked on that plan and updated that plan on our website. I can't tell you how many times. So as new information came, we had to react and adjust and we updated the new. So whatever's on the website will be the newest version, but you're absolutely correct. There will be new versions updated frequently depending on the meeting.
What was his name? Dr. Morthe? Anything else?
Wow. How did you know? I always like to have the last word.
There's an email address you can use.
I want to thank everyone. Together, thoughtful and and thorough and comprehensible and all the effort that you've put in is greatly appreciated. And I want to know that the people that support the board behind us. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have to vote.
I'm assuming.
Ben's gonna next to him.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bleecker, could you please take your roll call for 22B?
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmorski.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
A wholehearted yes.
Ms. Cohn.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
And Ms. Barrett.
Most definitely. Yes. Thank you again. Okay, now, may I have a move, a motion to proceed on 22B, the district's school calendar revised, Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Does anyone have any comments? Does anyone have any comments on the new calendar? We're all good to go.
Careful, where are you waiting for?
Good to go. Okay. Could you please take your roll call?
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmorski.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Ms. Cohn.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
And Ms. Barrett.
Yes. And now, may I please have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Kizmorski, seconded by Ms. Cohn. And our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.